It is six o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the meeting, for the Planning and Zoning Meeting of April 17th, 2025. If staff would call, roll, please.
Chair Frost has informed us that he will not be here tonight. So Commissioner Woolley?
Present.
Commissioner Lehman, who is attending online, so we'll give him a minute to say present. Is he able to speak?
Andrew, why don't you continue? We'll catch up with him.
Sure thing. Commissioner Pearl?
Present.
Vice Chair DeRosa?
Present, thank you. I need a motion to excuse Chairman Frost.
All made.
Any objections? Seeing none, so moved.
Okay. And our council liaison, Vice Mayor Adam, is here tonight.
Thank you for being here this evening. Is Commissioner Lehman online?
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Woolley, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. So this is a call to the public, call to the public for public comments on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticism made, may ask staff to review a matter raised or may ask a matter to be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any meeting during an open call to the public unless the matter are publicly noticed for discussion and legal action. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comments? We have two people online. Does anybody want to speak? There is no one in the audience. No one has raised their hand, so we'll close public comments and we'll move on to item number five, approval of the conditions for the minutes of the regular meeting of April 3rd. Any changes or corrections?
None here.
None here.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting, April 5th.
I'll second it.
I have a, I have, I have an approval by Council, by Commissioner Pearl and seconded by Commissioner Woolley. Are there any objections?
None.
Any changes? Seeing none, minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving on to new business, presentation, discussion, and work session of an amendment of the Town of Florence Department Code Chapter 150 regarding the radius of notification for applicable projects.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Chair. Tonight, we are bringing forth our research and recommendation for an update to the radius of notification. Just to inform you guys, I believe you all know this, but I'll just state it again. This is a information session and discussion only. You're not taking action on this item tonight. We do have a public hearing that has been advertised for at our next meeting on May 1st, which is coming up quick. And what we'll do tonight is present our recommendation, listen to what you guys have for feedback, and then we'll come back on May 1st with an update. So, start off with a little background. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission requested that we perform this research and look to increase the radius of notification. So us as staff, we researched several cities and towns. We went for a pretty large variety in population. You can see some smaller areas like Buckeye and Avondale, and then all the way up to the big city of Phoenix. And we chose these seven cities. They're across the East and West Valley, and I'm going to be going through them and showing you some of the key language that they have in their codes for their radius of notifications. So, right here, we start with City of Phoenix, the biggest one, and we have the 600 feet of the site, so all property owners within 600 feet. And then also, they have the piece about nearest residents within the four quadrants, so that covers the adjacent properties, making sure that the adjacents get notified. And then the neighborhood associations registered within a one-mile radius, which is 5,280 feet, which is for sure the pariah of the cities here. You'll see, no one else goes really that far out, but the City of Phoenix does. Next, we have the City of Chandler. So mailed to all landowners within 600 feet, and then registered neighborhood organizations within a quarter mile. City of Avondale, they have the flat 1,000 for both property owners and HOAs. And then City of Mesa has just the 500 feet, all property owners. City of Tempe, so I believe identical to City of Chandler, 600 feet, subject property, and then HOAs within the quarter mile. Town of Gilbert, we have the 300 feet, which I believe is the minimum required by the state, and then also the piece about HOAs within 1,000 feet. And you'll see here, too, I highlighted a good bit of Gilbert's because they do have a piece mentioning that if something requires more, then you would do more. City of Buckeye, which I put last for a reason, because you're going to see that we based ours maybe the most off of theirs. So you see, we have the 300 feet for a rezoning or those other applications, less than 20 acres, and then when you go greater than 20 acres, it bumps it to 500 feet. So that brings us to our recommendation for the Town of Florence, where we are currently at is just 300 for anything. However, what we're recommending is to maintain the 300 for a project less than 20 acres, for projects 20 acres or more to increase to 600, and then also incorporating the bit to inform neighborhood associations within the quarter mile for any application, regardless of project acreage. So that piece will always be there, but then there's that kind of 20-acre trigger. So those are really the four numbers that we need to keep track of for this, and so I made sure to highlight those. So if you want to see it visually, I did create some maps with some buffers around parcels. And we see here, this is a small parcel. This would be way under 20 acres. This is about a half-acre site. It's actually where our office is located. And so I created the 300-foot buffer around it. If you're wondering why it's not a perfect circle, it's because GIS is physically measuring 300 feet from every point on that rectangle, so you get this kind of rectangular ellipse shape instead of just a perfect circle, and you'll really see it when we do the big one. So here's a large one. This is a 40-acre parcel. This is actually where the recent Westland Village PUD was going to be, and so had this been the standard, they would have had to notify out to 600, and it would have looked like this approximately. Now, regardless of acreage, we still are notifying HOAs within the quarter mile. So we're back to the small parcel from the beginning and showing that 1,320 feet is a quarter mile, and we're showing that buffer. So not all of those residents are being notified individually, but if there is an HOA in there, and you see it's very, very close to Western Crossing down there in the southwest, then that HOA would be notified, or any other neighborhood organization within that radius. And here's what the quarter-mile buffer looks for the large parcel. This is zoomed way out, and you can see it covers pretty much the entirety of Bisbee Ranch there, so they would for sure get the notice, comes right up against Western Crossing to the south, and then if there's any other HOAs within that area as well. But again, not all of those individual residents would be notified. So for actually amending our code, and you guys do have the language in your packets as well as the research, we have four sections that we were looking to make the changes to. So conditional use, temporary use, citizen review, and applications and fees. So for conditional use permits, I understand that this first section, Section D, because of the usage of the word "or" there before "or" owners, it's a little bit confusing potentially, and so that will be reworked for syntax before the next meeting, no matter what we go with, you know, numbers-wise. It's just grammatically not great. So Section E is also being amended in the conditional use permit section. We move to temporary use. Again, not too much here, just changing the 300 to the recommendation from us, and then moving into citizen review process. There's actually nothing being striked from this section. It's all added. So Section 150.015 that it references there is the zone change section, and 15 and 22 kind of reference each other in their sections, but neither of them ever explicitly stated the 300-feet part, so I figured we should add it to at least one for clarity on that. So that's what you're seeing there. And then applications and fees, it's just describing what an applicant would need to provide, so of course, in the ownership list, we need to change that to state what our new rule would be. And then perhaps to get ahead of a question that might come up, why variance is not included in this list? So the first piece is that the Board of Adjustments are the only folks that hear the variances. They do not come before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then if we go through the chapter itself, you'll notice it talks about three notices of the hearing, one on the subject property, and then the other two within 300 feet. The way I read that and the intention of the section is to keep it within the kind of immediate neighbors and those who would be most impacted by a variance. So extending the radius for a variance does not necessarily make the most sense, so we decided to leave variance as is, but modify the others. And that is all I have, so we will entertain discussion now.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns?
I have no, nothing yet.
So Andrew, you're telling me that anything over 300 feet, you'll notify the HOA, not the individual homeowners, which means it is up to the HOA to notify their homeowners?
They would, they could post the notification in a community center, something like that.
It would be up to the HOA to let their members know.
That was, that would be in the quarter mile.
That, to me, does not work because it's not letting the homeowners know. It's letting the body of the association know, but it becomes their responsibility rather than the town's responsibility to let these people know.
And typically, that responsibility does fall on the applicant to do notification?
Correct. And the applicant pays for it, so why would we not have the applicant notify those who might be impacted rather than the HOA, who you're giving them a responsibility that they inherently is not theirs?
Understood.
So I personally would like to see that changed, to not the HOA, but the applicant. As far as variances, that's something council will determine if they want to have people notified. Like you said, it doesn't come before us, so council will be the ones who can determine whether or not they want homeowners notified of a variance being taken in their, in their area.
You have Gordon who wants to speak too. Gordon wants to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Lehman?
Yes, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I just like to simplify things. I guess rather than have a 300 and a 600 and trying to make the difference between them, I'd just like to simplify it all to 600 feet. And that's kind of what I proposed when I rewrote some of that, because I was confused the first time I read the, let's say, paragraph D of 15016, that, you know, well, are you talking 300 feet? Are you talking 600 feet? And that confused me. So I think based upon what Andrew's shown, as far as the distance from, say, their office to go 600 feet rather than 300 feet is really not that many more homes, but it's reasonable to be simple. Everybody understands it, and they can do it that way. That would be my comment.
Commissioner Lehman, what about larger parcels?
Well, the larger parcels, I really think that we do need to notify them within a quarter mile. So we could throw, well, homeowners and residents within a quarter mile might be the better way to phrase that.
So you're looking for a two-pronged approach, 600 feet for the smaller parcels, and for the larger parcels, going out 2,400 or going out the?
13, 20.
13.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A quarter mile is 13. I actually thought about, that's why I wrote it when I sent my ZIBB in, the nearest residents within 2,000 feet of the properties and any homeowners' associations within a quarter mile. So, you know, in essence, that way, the homeowners within the HOA would also get it, and we increased that to 2,000 feet, which is essentially a half a mile, especially when we're going to some of these ones that are out in the middle of, you know, desert, and we don't really have anybody close at all.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
My question is, the burden of the applicant notifying the applicants, whether it's 300 feet, 600 feet, quarter mile, whatever, is there a cost factor that puts us in a non-competitive position against other communities? The way this thing is outlined, there's, you know, there's a half a dozen different ways, 300, 600, 1,000, so on. So my question is, is there a burden, a cost burden to the applicant that would make a difference one way or the other?
They pay the postage.
Well, for 300, so it's a 300 feet, 600 feet, 1,000 feet. So the postage is based on how many homes there are within that area. So again, is it necessary to be out that far? I'm not sure exactly what, you know, what the big issue is here in terms of, you know, like, for example, HOA is pretty easy. They've got a way to communicate with all of their, the members of the home, just on an email, to notify what's going, that there's an issue. So I don't know, from a cost position, that's what I'm looking at.
Thank you. Commissioner Woolley?
Yeah, I tend to, I kind of like the first part where you're like, 600 feet for this, 300 feet for that. I'm kind of stuck on the homeowners' association side a little bit. Not every homeowners' association is a great association that communicates with their residents greatly, and, you know, there's some homeowners' associations out there that just exist, but that's all they do. So are we really doing the resident an injustice by counting on the HOA authority to notify them when they probably never will, because they're really a by-name-only HOA, if you will? And there are a lot of those out there that just don't really do anything with their developments anymore. So I'm kind of a little hesitant on the only notifying the HOA. If, I have no problem with notifying them, but I think the residents should be notified as well, if we're going to go that route. That's all I have.
So to remedy the HOA part, would we, would you want to just strike it entirely, or would we want to consider changing the large radius? How do we think to best remedy that?
I would leave the radius as it is, but just instead of the HOA, just notify the residents.
So 13, 20 for residents instead of HOAs? Thank you.
Any other suggestions for staff?
Could, on that last point, could we maybe talk about that and maybe get a little more specific direction on whether or not we're going to notify HOAs or not? Again, notifying the HOA in this, in the first paragraph is an additional requirement. Right now, the way this is written is if the property's less than 20 acres, everyone within 300 feet will be notified, everyone, and, right, and homeowners' associations within a quarter mile. When it's a development of 20 acres or greater, it's all owners within 600 feet and the HOA within 13, 20, or a quarter mile.
So AJ, what I'm hearing you say is that the homeowners will be, will be received notices, the HOA will get a separate notice, but the homeowners in that particular area will also receive notices?
Yes. And so right, as proposed, any owner within 300 feet on a project less than 20 acres would be noticed, as well as HOAs within a quarter mile. In a project that is 20 acres or greater, all owners within 600 feet will be notified, as well as the HOAs within a quarter mile. So if we go back to the example, Andrew, if you would, of, let's look at Westland, and then, so you see, this is showing a notice at 600 feet. Is that correct, Andrew?
Yes, this is the 600-foot buffer, so every resident in this, in the blue, would get noticed. So everyone in here and here.
And then the, and then the overlapping, was there an image of the radius for the HOAs?
That would be this. And I know the scale is a little different, but...
Scale, scale changes, but if you flip back and forth between the two, that's the 600-foot radius as proposed in the language before you this evening. You'll see that we know that there's an HOA in Bisbee Ranch.
Yes.
You'll see in the first image that a number of the homes were noticed at the north end of Bisbee Ranch, and then when we go to the second image, again, scale changes because we're zoomed out a little, that the HOA would have been notified, and then you would note, you would see that there's a chance that many of the additional homes within Bisbee Ranch may become aware because their HOA did reach out to them. So it just, for me, the HOAs just seems like, again, each are different, understood, but this is an additional outreach beyond the residents within 300 feet, the residents within 600 feet. It's kind of going to that next level. It's actually added to, as opposed to taking away from an attempt to reach more people when it comes to notification.
Okay. My concern was is that the notices were not going to the homeowners, but to the HOA, and then it was up to the HOA to notify the homeowners.
No.
So it was my misunderstanding.
So, okay, so that's, so what I've said is correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mattis, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if it, if it helps the commission, or you might feel, say, a little more comfortable to put things in context, so there's two measurements. One in the state statute is the 300 feet when you're rezoning, that you mail out to the 300 feet, and as AJ and Andrew said, that's the minimum. So you can do more, as we're all discussing, you can do more than that. The interesting thing is, the statute also talks about when there's a protest for rezoning. So there's a mechanism in the state statute that when a person applies to rezone their property, if 20% of the number of owners in the area within 150 feet of that project protest, there's a higher vote that's required to get it approved by the legislative body. So it's kind of interesting, because that's 150 feet. So, you know, if there's any concern that you, I mean, you're already allowing for more notice, I'm just trying to create some context. Even in the rezoning protest, which is kind of a really important thing in Arizona zoning cases, that notification is, or that measurement of who has standing to create that special interest is 150 feet. Now, that, I'm not trying to say that it's wrong to go further out. What I'm trying to say is, you know, you're doing quite a bit by going just out 600 feet, 1,300 feet. So if that helps you feel better about the context of what you're doing.
Yes, thank you. And this, this came up because of a protest. If you remember, the property owners, I believe it was around the prison area that we were rezoning, a lot of people felt that they did not get notice, so the comment became, maybe we need to expand it to 600 feet, and that's where Commissioner Lehman decided to ask that we look at 600 feet, and we all kind of agreed that 600 feet might be, would be a good standard. So do we want to stay at 3 and 6? Do we want to stay at 6 and 1/4?
I like what they presented, and I, sorry, I thought it was up there. I think AJ cleared it up, because I was a little confused at the beginning. I thought that if they belonged to an HOA, that the HOA would have to notify them and not the applicant. But what you're, what I'm hearing you say is, if they fall in the 600-foot range, they're getting notified anyways because of that side of it. We're just in addition notifying the HOA, which may even include more people than we even need in the first place. So I think you helped me. I kind of liked the, the, did you call it the Buckeye one, I think?
Yes, this was the other one with the trigger of the 20 acres.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of like, was that, that's the one, 20 acres or less, it's 300. 20 acres or more, it's 600. And then if there's an HOA within a quarter mile, they all get, the HOA gets notified too.
From what I can see on Buckeyes, they don't have a piece about the HOAs. It was, we borrowed that from cities like Chandler and Tempe and Avondale. So we kind of combined multiple pieces. And then Buckeye here, they do 300 and 500. I figured going 3 and 6, because it's double, just makes a little more sense, so.
So I kind of like the staff recommendation. I just wanted to make, I wanted it clear that we weren't relying on HOAs to do the work.
Right.
Yeah, that was my clarification also.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I like the staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Lehman? Any further comment?
I would like to, you know, propose that we go to 600 feet rather than 300 feet. I'm thinking of a couple years ago when the RV issue came up on Hunt Highway. Nobody on the Sun City side was notified because 300 feet wasn't enough. I think 600, let's just standardize it, 600 feet and quarter mile for those more than 20 acres, and notify HOAs within that quarter acre, quarter mile as well. Then that kind of standardizes. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. So I think we're going to be a split, a split commission tonight, because I tend to agree with Commissioner Lehman, that I like the 600 feet, as well as the quarter mile. However, next meeting, hopefully Chairman Frost will be here, so could we impose upon staff to bring forward both recommendations?
Right.
And then let the commission decide at that point, let majority rule?
I'm going to lean on Attorney Matisse here in a second.
You can bring it back and maybe...
Well, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we've noticed for a public hearing to bring this matter up at the May 1st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in anticipation that we could come to some level of resolution tonight. If we are going to publish the ordinance, we have to publish, this is where I'm leaning on you, we need to publish what it is our intention is, not a multiple choice. So if we're going to publish an ordinance for consideration, it needs to be one or the other.
Did you send it out, Arnie?
It hasn't been sent out yet. That's why we were having this evening's meeting, to get the final direction of planning and zoning.
Then let me ask this question. Would it be appropriate, since we have a council liaison here, to get her input? Yes or no?
Oh, that's fine. I guess what I, my thought is that as far as advertising, then staff, maybe you just hold off until after the next meeting, come back, have this discussion again, and then send out the advertisement, unless that creates a timing problem that I'm not aware of, but, you know, then you can have time to think about it.
I'd like to ask council liaison.
But that's appropriate, yeah.
Council, Vice Mayor, would you like to weigh in on this?
Off the record, since I'm not voting.
Yes, you know, you're not voting, and it is off the record, but we'd like to hear your opinion.
Right. I like Commissioner Prue's approach, and they've done quite a lot of research on this, and I think it's important that we don't... And I think it's important that we don't put too much of a burden on the applicants. That doesn't seem to be prevalent in other places. I understand simpler is better, but at the end of the day, there is a cost. It might be minimal compared to what they're investing. But I kind of like to go with the standard that's in place in most of the other places. And what we're seeing is a 300-foot, and then to a 500. So while it might be a little bit more confusing, I, I like having that.
And it would be 300 and 600?
Yes.
And, and then a quarter mile? Okay, let's bring it back with that, then.
And, and just, I, I guess my thing would be, if we made it all 600, what, what are we really benefiting from? Right now, we're presenting 300 and 600, quarter mile for HOA. We're, we're, it's getting us a good response. I think we're going, in my mind, people are looking at 600 because Florence is undergrown right now. So we have to reach out further to get people involved. But we have to look at future growth, too. What fits better? What fits better is a, a system where we're saying, you know what, if you're under this, then you only have to do 300 feet, but if you're over this, then you have to do this. Because I think the 600 is, and I'll use the Sun City for example, 600 would have worked up there, because we're reaching out to get people notified. But had the other development already been built there, they would have had a response with 300 feet notice. So I, I just, I, I, I think we're just adjusting to 600 to, to grab response, versus what, what's the real outcome of just notifying people, so.
I just didn't want to disenfranchise anybody, and having had people here who felt disenfranchised, this was an opportunity to make sure that we didn't do that again. But I'm good with going with 300 feet. It is the standard. It, it's worked in the past, it'll work in the future. And it will simplify matters and allow staff to bring it back at the next PNC meeting.
And correct me if I'm wrong, any public person in the town of Florence is entitled to attend the hearing. They're just not notified of the hearing. It's still on the, it's still informational, it's still in the newspaper, it's still posted on the street. They, they still have the opportunity to have their voice heard. They're just not going to get that fancy little postcard that comes from the town of Florence that says, oh, by the way. So, okay.
Thank you, Andrew, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, which is a training of, for the Planning Institute. AJ, will you be taking that?
Yes. Good evening, Vice Chair, Commissioners. It's good to be before you this evening. As we continue our training, the slides that were shared by APA for this training session were limited to the cover slides that we previously discussed. As you know, when you watch the video, it's a conversation between two gentlemen talking about their experience of, of serving as directors and, and planning consultants in public hearings. And, and we heard a lot of good advice, and some anecdotal in that presentation. So I believe that everyone's received the link to the video, and I'm sure you've all had the opportunity to review that video. And so really, I don't have anything to present from slides, because there, it was a conversation. And so really, what I'm hoping to do is this training this, this evening, is to let this be a conversation about managing meetings, and how difficult they can be, in some cases, how easy they can be. Again, we heard a lot of anecdotal things. We, we, we heard discussion about the difference between a public meeting and a public hearing, and I think that we all are well aware of the differences between the two. We, we heard a little bit about the roles that each of us would play during that meeting, whether it be the Chair, the Vice Chair, Commissioners. And I think as we, we heard during that presentation, the, the, the responsibility to set decorum. That, that seemed to be a resonating thing throughout the two gentlemen's conversations. And for me, I think the most important part of that conversation was to the decorum comment, that not everybody is going to agree with the loudest, most violent cheerleading that happens in the audience. There may be someone who has another point of view. And those people tend to get shouted down when there's, that is the condition in a board meeting. So that was, I think, the most important, is to remember as Commissioners, we represent all of the public, not just the loudest folks in the room. And that goes to, I think, keeping in mind decorum, right? Because we're here to represent all the residents of the town of Florence, okay? Not just the loudest. So I think that that was one of the things that resonated to me most important when we were talking about the Chair and the Commission members. And I guess I would pause here, as, as we were talking, it was a conversation. So what, what were some of the thoughts that you had when you were listening to that conversation about the role of the Chair, the Vice Chair, as this evening is going on? As it relates to that part of the meeting, you know, kind of setting expectations and, and handling what's going on? And I'll turn it over to the Commission.
Gentlemen?
I was kind of hoping that the video went more into... I, I want to say it right. When we talk about public hearings, the roles of the Commission, and the do's and the don'ts, and the, you know, I'll use for an example, when you're in a public hearing, the Commission does not have a direct dialect with the people speaking. We've had that a couple of times now, where that has happened. And I was kind of hoping that training would more go that direction, and, and really kind of drive home the points of order and stuff like that that we often see. My one question is, if there is a, I don't like using the word decorum, but if there is something not being done right, is, it is the responsibility of any Commissioner up here to, to point that out. And I think sometimes we fall short there. We, you know, I'll use the gentleman that basically at the last meeting stood up and threatened us. You know, that shouldn't be tolerated, he should have been removed from the room immediately. That, he's entitled to his opinion, but he's not, doesn't have the right to threaten the town or the people involved in the process. So I, I think I kind of wish it went into more of our responsibility of keeping that decorum, too. Not just us being good, how do we keep the public good, too? So.
So the Chair has a, a big part in that, in, in keeping that decorum, both of the, of the Commissioners and of the audience. And I think that tone is set at the beginning of a meeting, explaining what's going on, what's going to happen, what the expectation of the Chair is, what's expected of staff, and, and what's expected of the applicant and the Commissioners. And I, I think that's how we kind of set that decorum up as we begin. And you don't need to worry about him not electing you, because you're not elected anyway.
Agreed.
Just, just in case you forgot. But to me, that's, that's how the decorum is set. It is set by the Chair, it is set by the Commissioners, and how they behave and act towards each other. And for the audience, it is setting that expectation as to what they can expect to see happening at, at the hearing, what's going on, respecting their, their right to speak and voice their opinion, even though you may disagree. And, and staff kind of taking notes and making sure that all bases are covered. And for the, for the Chair to, to keep that, keep that in line.
Yeah, what, so in, in the case where, you know, someone gets out of line, and they're really out of line, I mean, how do we, how do we handle that, besides just asking them to leave if there's...
Right there.
So, go ahead, Attorney, please.
Just, so, over the years, it's almost inevitable in the public hearing, you're going to get some disruption. So it's always very hard for the Chair, I'll say my first word, defending a, any Chair. It's hard to gauge that and balance it between that First Amendment right, and when people have gone too far, and they're becoming disruptive. So I think it was, the point that was made is, the tone and the rules are set at the very beginning, very explicitly. That allows the Chair to repeat them. As things start to go out of control, if they start to go out of control, I think it's important for a Chair to step in quickly if there's a person or persons starting, say, to clap and cheer. And the, and the thing that I've heard in the past is that warning at the very beginning that we're not going to, the Chair isn't going to allow any outbursts, there are not going to be any eruptions from the stand. You get your chance to talk, but you have to do it in an orderly fashion. So everything that's been said is absolutely right on. And I think that individual Commission members can call a point of order, and that's kind of a shout-out to the Chair, we'll say, or to the staff, that we need to try and get things under control. Ultimately, I think what works best, if there's a sense from the Chair that things are getting too raucous, too out of control, or one person is really being disruptive, the absolute best way to handle that is to call a recess. Okay, you diffuse the situation. So we're going to call a 10-minute recess, boom. And then there's no floor for that person to speak. And if necessary, the Commissioners to leave the stand, so there's no one to talk to. There is that temptation to say, kind of like you're in a courtroom, and a judge might say to someone who's out of control, you know, you're in contempt and you're out. There is that human nature, and you want to say that, but I recommend against that, mainly because we're in that public hearing realm where constitutional issues can be brought up, and usually things are on TV, and, you know, the quarter, the 2020 hindsight makes it maybe look too extreme if you have someone removed physically. It's just so much easier to call a recess for 10 minutes, get off the stage, let things calm down. One thing that does help, like the city of Phoenix, and I'm not saying we need to do this, but it does help to have an officer present. I think we all sense that presence. I mean, even for police departments, the use of force continuum, your lowest level of force is presence. So their presence will calm things down, that's the first thing. And you see that in big cities. I mean, when I started in Tempe, we didn't have officers at every public meeting. It's kind of become a routine. City of Phoenix has, I think, the metal detector and officer, more than one officer. So I'm not saying that that's what we need to do, but all those things in combination, I think, work together to keep it under control.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lehman, yes, Commissioner Lehman, I see you have your hand raised.
You're on mute?
Or is that his mute?
I'm on mute, okay, I'm on mute.
Thank you. We can hear you now.
Okay. The video talked about, you know, if there's a representative of the group to speak in behalf of them, but more so is, when we get repetitiveness, I think that's when it gets to be, you know, I just object, I object. Different people come up and don't really talk about it. Is there any way for the Chair to say, in essence, you know, we've heard that point, is there anybody with new points to come up with? Please speak, but, you know, let's not continue to have the same, same point being made?
My past experience is you have to be careful with that one. And I'll use the Coppermine nine-hour meeting that we had. A lot of people said the same thing that night, just in different words. And we kept saying, if you guys are going to continue to say the same thing, please ask, please seek a spokesperson to speak for you, to reduce the time involved in the meeting. But we go back to what our lovely Attorney over here said earlier, and that's First Amendment. We can ask them to group, but we can't stop them from not, they, they get the right to speak during a public hearing. Whether they said the same thing the last 35 people said, they still get that right, so.
So Gordon, one of the things I, I used to do is I would say to people in the audience, if, if you agree with what's been said, please just raise your hand, if, if you don't need, necessarily need to speak. And, and that seemed to solve some of it. But as Commissioner Willie said, it's a First Amendment right, they have a right to get up and have their voice heard on the record.
Right, I agree with that wholeheartedly, that everyone has the right to speak. It's, and also, the, the issue that, as mentioned, is we are not going to take a vote based upon the, the voting of the public out there in the audience. So the fact that everybody comes to oppose it, and there's nobody speaking in favor of something, should not be swaying our vote. I know it's happened in a few other public meetings, but that's, that's the way I look at it. I'm going to look at it for the facts. I wish there was some way that if somebody makes a point that I hadn't thought of, I'd like to understand a little bit more, you know, question that, or wonder, how can I, I get a better understanding of what they brought up that I hadn't thought of?
There might be a way to ask staff for clarification, if there's a point that you'd like to have, get further information on.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's exactly what I was thinking. Thank you.
So, as we went through the video, we did get that recommendation ultimately from the gentleman that we were watching. They, they suggested take a break. And I think then they reminded us the importance of empathy, that people could be very charged. They, this could be very important to them. And whether they decide to have a spokesman or speak individually, we need to be empathetic of, of what they're facing, what they're dealing with. I mean, it took a lot of, it took a lot of something for them to come here to the meeting to speak. Not all of us are the greatest public speakers, right? And they're here, and, and we're going to give them that empathy and the deference to, to make their point, right? So I, I think it's, it's, it's all of the, all of the above. There's really no magic formula. There's, there's no one-size-fits. It's a lot of how we practice in the normal meetings, or the maybe less, less confrontational meetings, right? In practice, in our decorum, and how we all work together as a team. When we, and then when we get to those hot meetings, we know, okay, we're, we're, we got to be on tonight, and we're going to work collaboratively together to make it through, to give the folks that, that have something to say the opportunity to say it. And, and again, you know, most of the time, it, it takes a pretty serious situation, where someone's going to walk up, step up, and do what happened, you know? And, and, and then, you know, you hope you're managing that situation the best you can with us as this group, and, 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 you know, the support of our police department here, and our officers who are, are here to help. So I, I think that's why this session was more of a conversation than a PowerPoint presentation, because, because this is about a conversation, and this is about a level of nimbleness by the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Members. Because we, and all of us, we may not be on our game one night, and we need each other to help us through on those tougher evenings. The, the one thing I did want to clarify in that training was this, this, they, they spent some time talking about crowded agendas and moving things on to the next agenda. You know, in our ordinances, state statutes, there may be deadlines that are need to be met to get someone to a meeting. So one thing that, that I can stand here and promise is that I'm going to manage your agenda because it got too full. If we get a, a, a number of properly submitted applications that all fall into timeframes and durations for review and consideration, we may have a longer meeting that night. So I just wanted to bring that up, that that may be the case in Illinois that they may be able to do here in Arizona. We can't do that. We, if, if an application's... We, if, if an application is properly submitted and there are timeframes associated with that review and approval or, or review and whatever decision is ultimately made, the agenda may, may stack up. I, I tell you, it was a good conversation, this was a good conversation. I think we do pretty well. You know, we, we're, we're doing all right. You know, we're working together as a group to, to manage these meetings the best we can. We've got a lot of people here to help and support. We're doing okay. So it's good that we self-reflect and we want to criticize, not criticize, but we want constructive criticism and constructive conversations. But overall, I think, my opinion is that this commission does very well in handling, in, in really most recently, a pretty tough meeting. At the end of the day, it was handled, it is handled well. So that's all I have on, on this topic. As we go forward with the next several sessions that are included in there, you know, we, what's the next couple, Andrew? We have staff reports, we have comprehensive plans and zoning. So on these next couple, we may want to get to cover a couple topics in these next couple meetings. But also keeping in mind that we did want to start spending some time talking about the general plan and working our way through that. So I think it's going to be important to balance our time, of course, right? To, so maybe as we go forward, we'll, we're, we're going to focus on one of the, we, we've agreed to talk about, I think, the introduction and maybe the second section of the general plan. Maybe we'll focus on one more training topic for the next meeting and kind of just keep it balanced like that. I have a feeling that the general plan conversation may, we may get into it a little bit more in terms of a, a conversation discussion. So if that would be the pleasure of the commission, that would be my hope for the next agenda.
That's good, yeah, I like it.
So AJ, it was important for me that staff balance their time. You've been here since eight o'clock this morning.
Yeah.
Meeting's going to nine, 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Serve no purpose. You have lives. So, you know, I'm asking staff to balance what's on the agenda with informational stuff that, that you're going to support us with.
What?
If the agenda is short, we can cover more. If the agenda's full, and I'll let staff make that determination as to...
Okay. So we'll, we'll keep the business requirements on the agenda, of course. However, if we're doing information or training, we'll, we'll make sure to balance that with what might be on, on the, at the top end of the agenda. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. Don't go away because now we have your, your director's report.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Commissioners. A few things to discuss. We did, there was a neighborhood meeting held last night at the community center for Skyview Farms. Andrew here attended that meeting. We did have three residents attend the, the public meeting. And from my understanding is it was really more about learning more about the project, what was going on, and I would just like to hand it off to Andrew for a little bit of an update since he was in attendance.
Sure thing. So the, the, the project is a PUD amendment for Skyview Farms, and it's also a, it involves an annexation as well as some reconfiguration. They're also looking to absorb the Aspen Farms PUD, the rest of it. The history of that is that Aspen Farms was created and then about half of it was split off and then they created Monarch. The other half is now going to become part of Skyview Farms. And then there is a piece, a 200-acre piece to the south of Skyview Farms, which is on Arizona Farms Road, in case you guys weren't familiar, that they're looking to annex. And so the neighborhood meeting just centered around, the, the applicant gave a presentation, which was pretty similar to the pre-app that they had with us, where they just showed kind of the configuration of everything, a little bit with circulation and land use. And, yeah, three neighbors attended. Two were a married couple to the north and then another resident to the south, who learned from word of mouth. The, the, he was outside of the radius, but his neighbor told him about it.
So Andrew, how many homes will be in this, in this development?
I don't want to say a number and be wrong.
Ballpark. Over, over, over 100, less than 10,000. Just give me some kind of a...
Let, I would say less than 10,000, but...
Is it going to be a, a big project?
It's pretty, it's pretty large.
Pretty large, okay, that's great.
But a lot of the, you know, what was going on is an amendment to what is already in place, of course. This is not necessarily a whole lot of new zoning coming in. There's the annexation piece, of course, but a lot of it's kind of just reconfiguring how things are out there.
And of course, they had an opportunity to talk about traffic circulation?
Yes. And we have, we have reviews and, you know, staff reviews underway as well, so, yes.
Ms. Commissioner Lehman?
Yeah, is, is this all residential? Is any business associated with it?
Commissioner Lehman, that PUD is mostly residential.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Continuing?
Please.
The, the department has received a countless number of final plats. Eleven have been reviewed, comments offered back to the applicants. Seven more are in the first review. And on average, the department is receiving two to four final plats every couple weeks. So we're, we're keeping pretty busy on final plat, submittals and reviews. We have received a, a number of requests from applicants for amendments to the general plan. So the department's been working closely with administrat, the administration to finalize the calendar for general, major amendments to the general plan. That's a, a pretty significant undertaking that will take a number of months before we even get to hearings here at planning and zoning and at town council. So a lot of that time will be spent over summer and reviews and things like that, and we're expecting hearings here and at town council in, I think, August and September of 2025. So this would be major amendments to the town's general plan. Coinciding with those amendments are a number of PUD amendments that would need to be, that are all part of that whole process. So soon after, if it's the pleasure of the town council to move a whole, forward with amending the general plan with the amendments being requested, soon thereafter, we'll be seeing a number of planned unit developments coming in for amendments to their, their governing documents or their ordinance, their PUD ordinance. So a lot of work on that front. It's, it's a number of, it's a number of projects. That concludes my report on some of the upcoming projects that we're anticipating in the department. Yes, Vice Chair.
Commissioner Lehman?
I'm not going to ask you for an answer now, but House Bill 2447, as I read it now, would take a lot of the responsibility off of the Planning and Zoning Commission and move it to administrative charge. Have you looked at that at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I guess we'll, we'll see how it develops, if it gets passed by the legislature in the next month.
It, it, yeah, as an update, that has passed. That was signed by the governor and, and we're, it, it's in review right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Vice Chair, I, I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to ask this at this point, at this, but I'm really interested in knowing or understanding if, what, what the plans are or maybe interest in developing commercial areas within our community. You know, and I'm talking about, you know, retail, restaurants, pizzerias, that kind of thing.
I believe I can have that as part of my department report, Attorney Matisse, right? Okay. And we continue to, actually, just yesterday, Mayor, Town Manager Walls, myself met with brokers interested in moving forward with commercial development at Merrill Ranch and Hunt Highway. So what I can report here is there is that interest, both at that intersection, the intersection of Franklin and Hunt High, Hunt Highway. So we are seeing action in those hard-zoned, commercial corners there along Hunt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, thank you.
Question?
No. So Mr. Monroe, what precipitated these major amendments to the general plan?
Applicants looking at the general plan and wanting to move forward with a different type of land use. And our general plan has the future land use map, and if it shows as an example that this area, Area X is going to be suburban neighborhood, and the developer wants to come in and, let's say, move to industrial or employment or commercial, that, and they want, so they want to basically change the map in the general plan, that's what's, that's what's causing that. And inside the general plan, if a proposed change to that map is below certain acreage, it's considered a minor amendment to the plan. If it's, even if it's over a certain size, it becomes a major amendment to that plan. So that's what it is. It's outside entities coming in, wanting to move forward on some of those older planned unit developments that were approved in the community in the past years with a new development direction.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
No.
No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll call to Commissioners for current events. Commissioner Woolley?
It might not be necessarily current, but it's something I'd like to ask staff, maybe in the next meeting or the meeting after that, with the new bill that was just signed by the governor yesterday, just kind of, where's a, future meeting, where is that going to put us now? Now we, we know now that preliminary plats are you guys. That takes PNZ completely out of the whole plat process now because they go to council for a final. So just rekindling the whole thing now with the changes, what's it going to look like to PNZ in the big picture?
We can, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lehman? Nope.
Nope, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Any comment, question?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you all for being here this evening. We'll adjourn to this evening's meeting. I need a, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.